Okay. All right, calling to me order the meeting of the Travis County Commissioners Court, and I'm going to send it off to Mayor Adler to, uh, Mayor, to call your meeting to order.
Thank you. The City Council Special Call Meeting here today on January 26, 2021. Also called to order, we have a forum present, uh, the time is 9:03. Thank you, Judge.
All right, and now I'm gonna call to order the joint meeting of the Travis County Commissioners Court and Austin City Council, and it's 9:03 a.m. on January 26. And we've got here over at Commissioners Court's side, myself and Commissioner Howard. Today, you can actually see her as opposed to last week when you could not. And then at remotely, we've got Commissioner Gomez, Commissioner Shea, and Commissioner Trevillion. And first, we're going to go to the public comments section. Nate, do we have any callers today?
We do, Judge. We have currently three callers on the line wishing to comment on this.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the callers, please.
Perfect, and I think we're actually finishing up screening one of them, so please just give us just a moment, and then we will go live with them.
Okay.
And Judge, while you're doing that, um, um, I'm gonna need to pull away at 10 o'clock. I'll try to get back as quickly as I can. Kathy, can you take over any turning responsibilities for us while I'm...
Sure thing.
Thank you.
And Judge, we are ready to go with the callers. Is the court ready?
Yes.
Perfect, we're gonna go ahead and unmute then. The first caller that we have commenting on this item is, uh, by the name of Cara Boubat. And Cara, you are now connected with the court, and may go ahead with your comment.
Okay, great, thank you, yes. Um, my comment is for, um, the court and also Dr. Mark Esq. On January 12th, when I called in, um, I was, um, told that, um, per the transcript on 12:11 p.m., Dr. Esq. said that he's... I blocked him about because she's spreading misinformation. Um, he goes on to say that my post, um, that I presented from the CDC in my questioning was fraud. And I have a real problem with this because Dr. Esq. has been forwarded the email that I was referring to where the CDC explains that they are counting and coding pneumonia and influenza with coronavirus. Then Esq. goes on, Dr. Esq. goes on to say, "Let's not debate issues which are not debatable." When there is proven evidence that masks do not work and actually contribute to infection, um, I have studies, randomized controlled studies from 2015 that prove this. And for Dr. Esq. to tell somebody that we cannot debate issues which are not debatable is really, really concerning to me because when there's two sides to a story, it must be debated. And people that are representing this community that took an oath, I think you need to look into that, and I think you need to also look into a doctor who's being, you know, giving you information, calling a citizen, um, posting information that's fraudulent, that's defamation. And my name is my word, and I have never once posted information that is fraudulent.
Thank you. I think that's enough. I don't think we're gonna, um, talk about things that are not scientifically proven and/or disparage our, uh, Dr. Esq. So thank you for your comment today. Next caller, please.
Perfect, and our next caller is James Linder. James, you are now unmuted and may go ahead with your comment.
Yeah, so my concern, I'll keep this brief, is that, uh, since COVID started, we've not had open access to our policymakers, can't reach lawmakers regarding, uh, family law issues. You know, this is one of the most impactful areas of, uh, law. Uh, legislative sessions are going on, we have no access to these people. Judges are creating law arbitrarily instead of enforcing law, and the families that I work with at both matter, uh, want to know how to affect change, and we can't do that without transparency and access and accountability in government, and that's becoming a ongoing issue with COVID.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, David.
We'll go to our next caller, Rita, and I apologize, I'm probably going to mispronounce this, Chikarur. Uh, Rita, you are now unmuted, and may go ahead.
Perfectly. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, you actually did that perfectly. My, you didn't butcher my name like most people do, so I'm gonna put you in my little black book of good name pronouncers. Thank you. Uh, good morning, everyone, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I think I'd like to second the first caller, I don't know her name, um, that I come from a family of doctors, masks are not very effective. Uh, secondly, there is a doctor by the name of Dr. Hutchinson. Um, he is a, uh, very well-accomplished virologist, neurologist, um, and medical doctor who talks about, uh, the real issues with regard to COVID. But, but I'm not gonna comment on any medical aspect of it because I'm not a licensed medical professional. I wear my mask where I'm asked to, just out of respect for the community and for our older population. Uh, with regard to James Linder, um, my organization is called, I'd like to second his opinion and, um, kinda embolden and bolster what he's saying, is that I represent hundreds and hundreds of families, not just in Travis County, but also in Texas, and we're, as an organization, we're growing nationwide. We're called Our Children Matter Most, O-C-M-M. Uh, we recently, um, did a 150-mile walk, a peace walk, uh, from, uh, Brownwood, Texas to the state Capitol. We wanted to have a seat at the table and talk to our legislators during this active legislative session about the issues, that these are serious matters that are affecting our families. For example, there's very few supervised visitation monitors that even want to do visits with our children because of these COVID restrictions, and as a result, I myself have not been able to see my children for over 400 days. Um, and these are, this is a common story, uh, you know, between many, many families. We really need your assistance, we need the Commission's assistance. Uh, policymakers are not responding to us under the guise of COVID restrictions. When we reached the state Capitol, uh, on the 21st, everything was boarded up. We have over 130 National Guard, we have no access at all to policymakers. So if, uh, I, before I hang up, I do want a contact or information or something like that of a person who can organize at least, you know, Zoom meetings and open it out to the public because concerned citizens, we want to speak to our state representatives, and we want to voice our concerns, and this COVID, uh, you know, restriction has literally made this, um, in a, uh, very, very closed-door policymaking, and that is very, very concerning to us and our children and our families. So I really request the Commission to please not just take this comment because I will follow up. I do need a contact or...
That is the three-minute mark.
Uh, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rita and James, those are both well-taken about access to government during, during COVID. Nate, are there any other callers?
Not at this time, Judge.
Okay. Great, so just a little bit, same, same deal as last week, to kinda help ensure the efficient use of Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden Howard's time and to manage the length of the briefing, I, we've all, uh, I guess gonna limit ourselves to one question in the order below, just like last time, and if time permits, go to a second round of questions. So that would mean the Commissioners Court, and then the Judge, and then Council members, and the Mayor, and then, uh, go from there. So first, our first briefing, Dr. Esq., if you are ready, um, we're gonna have a briefing from Dr. Esq. on COVID-19.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners and Council, uh, for the opportunity to provide an update on COVID-19. Can y'all see my, uh, slides?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, so first off, I have an update of our new confirmed cases in Travis County. Yesterday, we reported 544 new cases with a moving average of 577. Uh, our peak was 10 days ago, and we have been decreasing since then. Uh, so good news on the, on the case front. I'll talk more about that in terms of positivity a little bit later on. Uh, but what we are seeing is that, that folks are changing behavior. Folks are wearing masks, folks are staying home, and that is resulting in, in these decreased cases, so well done Travis County. Uh, similarly, on our admissions, yesterday we reported 68 new admissions with a moving average of 81. Uh, our peak was 17 days ago and decreasing. Uh, again, it's a relatively flat decrease, but still moving in a, uh, in a positive direction in terms of, uh, our forecast, which I'll, I'll talk about in a little bit, uh, in a few more slides. But again, certainly, uh, evidence that, that what we are doing is working. I will say that the, uh, first day of declining admissions was exactly 10 days after, uh, the implementation of the curfew, uh, by the city and the county. Uh, that 10 to 14-day period is exactly when we'd expect to see impacts from policies on admissions to the hospital. Uh, we did not see a second surge from New Year's Eve that we expected, and I believe that's because of, of the courage of the city and the county, uh, to issue those orders and, uh, to ensure that, that we could protect this community, uh, in a way that was needed at that time. Again, I think the, the ongoing protective actions of our community, uh, of our schools and, uh, and our businesses are certainly contributing to that decline in admissions to the hospital. This slide is showing, uh, in blue, our hospitalizations. Yesterday, we reported 577 individuals in the hospital with a moving average of 586. Uh, our peak was six days ago and is declining. Uh, the orange is our ICU, uh, individuals with COVID-19. Yesterday, 157 with a moving average of 170, uh, with a peak 10 days ago and declining. Uh, the, uh, gray is our ventilator utilization. Yesterday, we reported 90 with a moving average of 101, uh, with a peak 11 days ago and that moving average and declining. Uh, so again, all the measures, uh, this week show significant improvements in our COVID-19 situation in Travis County. Now, when we look at the map of the state again, uh, again, the red Xs are those trauma service areas that are in surge. Um, you can see that the one in the middle, O, has turned yellow, that's us. And it's turned yellow because we've actually begun to drop below that 15% threshold yesterday at 14.59, which marks the second day in a row. Uh, when I say yesterday, that was actually Saturday and Sunday, uh, both below that, but that's the latest data that we have from, uh, reported from DSHS. So we're looking at other metro jurisdictions in the state, uh, they are still significantly above that 15% mark, with Houston being 18.69%, El Paso 19%, Dallas-Fort Worth 21.8%, and, uh, San Antonio 23.17%. Again, uh, this is, what we are seeing here is a reversal of that hospitalization trend, and, uh, and I just wanna recognize the incredible work that the city, county, and our residents, our entire community have done to, to push this number back down below 15%. Um, we've gotta continue that effort, we've gotta push it down further, uh, but we are doing an excellent job, and, and I'm proud of this community for the work it's done. Uh, this is a projection from the UT Modeling Consortium regarding, uh, our outlook for, uh, hospital admissions in, uh, the MSA. So when we look at, at this, we can see that, uh, again, it indicates that, that we have peaked and that we are coming down from that peak. Again, this model assumes that disease transmission is going to stay the same, so if we let down our guard, if we start removing those protections that got us here, it will bounce up again. If we continue those efforts, if we double those efforts, we can push it down even faster. Right now, uh, the median projection indicates that we'll drop below 60 on that, uh, moving average of admissions on the 17th of February. Uh, so again, uh, certainly a better forecast than last week and, yeah, prior weeks. Uh, this graph is looking at the hospitalizations, so total numbers of individuals hospitalized. Similarly, we see, see a decline going into the middle of February and dropping below that 500 hospitalizations, uh, around the first to second week of February. And we see a similar pattern in the ICU numbers. Uh, again, the ICU tends to be a bit slower in the decrease due to the length of time that individuals stay in the ICU, uh, but again, decreasing and approaching that 100-mark by the middle of February. Now, this graph is an update of our hospitalizations, uh, our weekly hospitalizations by age group. Uh, we can see that in the orange line that we've had a significant increase in the individuals in the 80-plus age group in their hospitalizations, slight decrease in the 70-79 group, and a significant decrease in the 60-69 age group. The younger age groups, uh, the 50s on down relatively flat, uh, as compared to last week. When we look at the numbers of individuals hospitalized in each of those age groups, uh, we can see that on this right-hand column. Uh, you can see that we had a, a further decrease in the overall admissions, moving from 537 to 504 last week. Uh, you can see that was the increase of 17 individuals in that 80-plus age group who were hospitalized, but decreases in that 70-79 and 60-69 age group. Again, the others being relatively flat as compared to the prior week. Now, this graph is the hospitalizations by race and ethnicity. Uh, we did see some decrease in our white, non-Hispanic, uh, group, which was hospitalized last week, relatively flat for our Latinx community in green. Uh, our gray line, which is our African-American community, slight increase as compared to last week. Again, the others relatively flat week over week. This is that same data broken down by numbers of individuals, uh, again, uh, 182 to 177 for our Latinx group in the green, uh, 224 to 200 for our white, non-Hispanic group, and 51 to 60 for our African-American community. Uh, our Asian, non-Hispanic community, uh, 14 the previous week, 13 last week, so again, relatively flat there. Uh, this is an update of our positivity week over week. Uh, last week, with more than 24,000 test results in, uh, we are showing a 12.6% positivity, uh, so a drop from 14% the week before. Uh, you can see that it's a, a slow but steady drop, uh, over the past several weeks, and again, uh, we need to continue to push that down. Our, our goal is really under 3%, maybe a little bit happier if we're under 5%. So we still have quite a ways to go in terms of positivity and getting ourselves into a better situation to enter, uh, stage four and hopefully stage three and below. Uh, so it's gonna require more work, lot of positive information this week, uh, but we certainly need, need to reinforce that those protective measures are working, the masking and distancing is working, staying home if you can is working, we've gotta continue those things. We look at the breakdown of positivity by race and ethnicity. Our Latinx community, which is in the, uh, gray bar in the middle, uh, 22.2% the previous week, 19.3% last week. Our American Indian, Alaskan Native, relatively flat, 17% to 16.8%. African-American down a little bit, 13.7% to 12% last week. Our Asian, uh, positivity, 10.7% the previous week to 9.7 last week. And our white, uh, non-Hispanic, 10.7%, slightly increased to 10.9%. Again, we'll still get more data for last week, so these numbers may change, uh, but certainly some, some drops, uh, across the board in, in many of the, uh, races and ethnicities. We look at the positivity by age group, uh, again, unfortunately, we're seeing that the 80-plus age group is leading in terms of positivity with a positivity rate of 18% last week. Uh, we are also seeing, uh, high positivity in our 10 to 19 age group, so, uh, our school-age and college-age group, uh, still, uh, still quite high. Again, uh, other than those two groups, drops in the, in the positivity, uh, for the other age groups. We look at the, uh, our schools reports, so these are cases reported into our, uh, our nurse line for Austin Public Health for COVID-19. 265 cases in schools last week, 163 students, 98 staff, and four other, which are, are visitors to the campus. Um, again, uh, it's not just the impact of cases, but the impact of exposures. So almost 2,000, uh, close contacts that were in quarantine last week due to COVID-19 exposures. Uh, again, we've got to continue to, uh, encourage our, uh, our community, our families to choose virtual if they can, to help decrease the numbers of individuals in-person on campus, uh, particularly while we continue in stage five. Um, again, you know, it's, it's certainly a discussion that, that parents need to have, uh, to determine what's right for, for their individual student, but if we can decrease the number of, of students on campus to preferably under 25%, it's going to put us in a better situation to control disease as we battle with the potential for, uh, COVID-19 variants, as well as, uh, as some of the other challenges like the, the, the community positivity. Now, when we look at the data based upon, uh, school-aged children in positivity, we've got it broken down a bit further, uh, for the, e-each of the, uh, the school types. So our high school-aged students positivity 17.1%, middle school-aged, uh, students 16.1%, both outpacing the, the community positivity. Elementary school and preschool both below that community positivity, 11.4% and 10.3%. Uh, so again, uh, we've gotta continue that work in protecting our schools, uh, and continue to advocate for virtual education if it's possible for families to do that. Uh, we, we are, uh, continue to see rises in our nursing home and long-term care facilities, 332 in the past 14 days, 662 in the past 28 days, uh, so significant increases in the positivity there. Again, uh, our best way to control the positivity in these facilities is to control the community positivity, uh, but we need to all be reminded that, uh, these are the most vulnerable individuals to COVID-19 in our community. So if we are going to visit with individuals in, in these facilities, we need to ensure that for the 14-days prior to that, that we are always masked, we're always using, uh, physical distancing, and you're paying close attention to your hand hydrate. Uh, again, people can spread disease even when they don't know that they're sick, so it's important that, uh, particularly in, in the circumstance, you're gonna visit a loved one in one of these facilities, that you are extra careful. Uh, brief update on our regional infusion center, uh, as you all may have seen yesterday, the governor announced, uh, the, uh, expansion of this regional infusion center, and I just wanna thank the state, uh, the Texas Division of Emergency Management for their incredible work in supporting this effort, along with our partners at Community Care, uh, of course, Austin Public Health, and, uh, a, a number of other entities that have supported this. Uh, the site was opened on the 6th of this month. Since then, 302 individuals have been treated with monoclonal antibodies. We started with a, um, a capacity of 26 a day, TDM has increased that to 90 a day, um, and that was, uh, completed yesterday. In addition to that, they've also, uh, created a regional call center, which went active yesterday as well. So, uh, clinicians can refer patients here who meet the criteria for monoclonal antibodies. Uh, these are, this is the treatment the president received and many others have received, uh, which can decrease the risk of hospitalization for those who are at higher risk for severe disease. Uh, so if folks are out there and they have higher risk for severe disease, they need to contact their physician and, uh, discuss a referral to this infusion center for this free, uh, monoclonal antibody infusion. Uh, in an update on our Travis County alternate care site, uh, currently, as of yesterday, 28 individuals in the alternate care site, uh, 17 additional individuals have been treated and discharged from that facility. Uh, the capacity has been increased to 50, uh, and obviously, uh, continues to have the ability to expand beyond that, 250 within the current hall, and up to almost 1,000. Uh, now, some people may be asking, why would we consider the need for increase when our hospitalizations are decreasing? The answer is everywhere else around us continues to surge, and those numbers continue to be high, San Antonio, Waco, Bryan College Station, Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston. Um, so we have the possibility, as our, as our hospital situation gets better, we still have the possibility of helping support other areas that are still being hard-hit by COVID-19. Um, so again, these are individuals that have to be referred from a hospital. Now, this is not a site where individuals can, can show up for COVID treatment, uh, and we continue to, to care for low to moderate to acuity patients, uh, so folks who are generally within a week of, of being able to go home or, uh, be dispositioned, uh, to, uh, to another care facility. Uh, brief update on influenza, numbers continue to look good, uh, positivity for week two of this year, 1.17% overall positivity, 1.08%. When we look at the comparison this year compared to the previous three years, you can see that we are continuing to track at the bottom, uh, of the graph here. So again, uh, the work that, uh, that folks have done to get vaccinated this year for flu, the masking, the distancing, all those things are contributing to, uh, what may be a, a record year for us in terms of, of flu. Again, we remain in stage five of our risk-based, uh, guidance, which means no gatherings with individuals outside of your household, uh, dining and shopping should be limited to essential trips only, uh, non-essential travel should be avoided, and again, we recommend our businesses that have, uh, transition to takeaway, delivery, curbside, contactless options to help us decrease that face-to-face interaction and further decrease the risk of spread. Now, with that, I will pass it over to Director Hayden Howard for, uh, the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Esq. Um, next slide, please. Um, we continue to make improvements, um, to the sales, Austin Sales Force, um, portal. Um, what our team typically does is, is that the updates are based upon, um, user feedback that we are receiving, and, um, as we make those, um, updates and changes, we will be working with PIO, um, to get that information out, to share with the public what those changes have been. The goal is, is that we, we wanna make sure, um, that before we deploy it to the public, um, that our, our staff do some additional testing, um, and then that way, if there's any kind of concerns that come up in our kind of testing part of, of making sure the system is working appropriately, we can address that before we roll it out publicly. One of the other things that we're, we're doing is, is that we're really trying to make sure that from the beginning of the process of when you, uh, enroll and get an account, um, throughout your checkout process, um, including coming back in for your second vaccine. So we wanna make sure that that is, um, a smooth process. In addition to that, um, we are, um, looking at, uh, making upgrades to the scheduling appointments, um, we have received that feedback as well from users. Um, some of the other things that, um, we're gonna just kinda contin- continue to message, um, about the dot A P H at the, either the username, but we are also, um, looking at, is there the possibility of using social media accounts, um, as well and/or phone numbers? And so that is one of the other, um, things that staff are working on. Next slide. Um, as you all were aware, um, we did receive, uh, an additional 12,000 vaccines last week, um, and so we, um, completed those on, on this past Saturday, uh, through two points of distribution sites. Uh, we are continuing to prioritize our frontline staff, and so, um, we received word this weekend that we would receive, um, 12,000 more vaccines. The schedule, um, that we are... The schedule that we are going to use is going to be a Wednesday through Saturday. And so it's important for, you know, the public to know that we're going to continue to prioritize frontline staff that meet the 1A and 1B criteria. We met with the superintendents on, yesterday, and did receive some feedback on our scheduling. And so we will continue to prioritize them as well, as well as the public. The other thing that we feel is a very critical population is still in the education area is our childcare providers. We are going to send out surveys to our childcare providers and get an idea of how many fit into the criteria of 1A and 1B. As you all know, that childcare providers, because the children that they're working with typically are not wearing masks, they're in very close proximity to the children. And so that is an area of concern at this time. Our pilot is continuing with outgoing calls to set, to assist with setting up accounts and scheduling those appointments, and our ongoing vaccine outreach and education, those contracts are effective, and so they will continue to work to reach difficult-to-reach populations. Next slide. Our long-term care, we wanted to include that in this presentation as well. 51 facilities have been provided vaccines, which is over 5,000 staff, 5,600 staff and residents. We continue to work with them and make sure that there's no gaps in the vaccine. And as we determine that there is a gap, we determine if it's going to be us or if it's going to be a partner that will be able to provide the vaccines for them. And so that is an ongoing effort that we will continue to do. We are still having some hesitancy from the employees, and so we will continue to share educational materials and strategies for those facilities, because it's going to be so important for us to ensure that the staff have received the vaccine and they have confidence in the vaccine. Next slide. This is an update to the information that was sent out last week. It gives you a snapshot of Delco and Duff Springs for our week one and week two. We are, our staff are starting to work on the dashboard. That will be a similar dashboard that we have for our other areas. And right now, the dashboard that staff will be working on will only have information from Austin Public Health. We have reached out to the state of Texas to ask for a file, which includes all of the information from the IMATRAC data entry. And so once we get that, we'll start to populate that as well on the dashboard. But that is, that is in the works, and I'll be waiting for my staff to give me an ETA of when we will have that established. The other thing that we are doing with vaccines is we have, working with outside consultants to look at areas for mass vaccinations, including drive-through options, as well as getting in place our at-home vaccines for seniors and elderly persons. So those things are in the works. And so as we know more about the vaccine coming in, that we can really expect how much we're going to get, we can plan from that. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Hayden. Let's start off, Commissioner Gomez, do you have any, do you have a question?
Yes. Given the number of people who have gotten, served at the Delco Center and Duff Springs, what percentage of that, of our population has been served, has been reached?
It's about 2%.
And, and we have a long way to go to reach that herd immunity. And so it seems to me, just from reading articles in the national news, it does not appear that the supply is there for any of the states. And so we're all kind of dependent on the national giving over to the states, and then the states giving over to the local communities. And so we're at the very end of the, of the, of the reception line, so to speak. And so we're a long way from getting there. And it just seems to me like, like we need to, and it's really none of our fault, I think it was, it started at the national level with lies and keeping information from the public, you know, and just being straightforward. But nonetheless, we're all going to pay a huge price if we don't prepare with a plan for mass vaccinations, as it appears to me. I don't, and so if that's the case, then do we have a plan locally to do mass vaccinations?
Yes, we-
If we don't, I think we need to.
Yes, we do, we do have a plan. All of our plans are scalable. As you know, we have a smaller site and a larger site, and the ability to scale up to do mass vaccination. So we do have a plan. However, we know it's important for us, we are, we are working with a consultant that has a history of here of successful events in Austin, in Travis County. So that is going to assist us as well with what may be happening either outside of the facility, or help us with putting together the exact drive-through plans. What we really want to be able to do at those mass vaccine locations is we want to be able to get 200 to 300 people through those sites per hour.
And how, and I guess the only other question I have is, and we want to do all of this by when?
Well, it's going to be contingent upon receiving the vaccine. And so that is the thing, you know, that will help us. Our plans are set where within, you know, two to three days notices, what we've had conversations with the consultant about. So we can stand up pretty quickly, which, which as you see, we've done that thus far. With the first notification of the 12,000 vaccines, we received that notification on Thursday. By Monday, we were providing 12,000 vaccines during that week.
Thank you. Commissioner Shay.
Thanks, Judge. And as always, thanks to Dr. S. Scott and Director Hayden Howard. Do we have any idea how the state is deciding on the allocation? And then I'm also wanting to know clearly which are the hubs? I mean, we said, we said in court last week, who are the hubs? And then I got an email from someone who had received an email from one of the hubs saying, no, 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 don't have the vaccines. So A, this is super confusing, but B, it's, I have no understanding of how this, the state is deciding what areas to allocate the vaccine to. And if I'm understanding right, Dr. S. Scott, I think you'd said Travis County accounted for 4.4% of the total 333,650 vaccines allocated by the state last week. I mean, I don't know what our population is in compared to the total state, just what, 30 million in the state, but I just, I have no sense of how the state is doing this. Does there appear to be any rational plan? I realize, I mean, the previous administration made such a mess of the vaccines and lied about the supply, and we can't magically make the vaccine appear, but for the allocation the state is getting, do you have any understanding of how they're deciding where they're going to distribute it?
Yeah, so Commissioner, it's distributed based upon population, it seems. We represent 4.4% of the state population. We get 4.4% of the, of the allocation, if my numbers are correct. It matches up very well, because we checked. Regarding the hub issue, the places that I discussed last week have indicated to us that they can serve as a hub. But you're right, they haven't received vaccine to actually be a hub. The only places receiving vaccine this week are Austin Public Health, the Dell Medical School, which received 1,950, is also serving as a public vaccination hub or site. And then Community Care received a small allocation. We're happy to see that Williamson County and Hayes County both received significant numbers of vaccine. But again, you're right, it's, we're short. We don't have nearly enough to do aggressive vaccination at this stage. And I think that really is going to depend upon the approval of new vaccine. Johnson &amp; Johnson and AstraZeneca are the next two that are in line for FDA consideration. I think until then, we shouldn't expect to see huge increases in the supply chain of the two existing vaccines.
Do you think there's a reasonable chance that we could get to the new president's goal of a million vaccines a day for the first 100 days? Is that likely? I mean, I don't, I don't know that they've addressed the supply issue, but I appreciate they're throwing their hat over the fence so they can go and get it and have a big lofty goal, but is there even that much vaccine in the supply?
I'm not aware of that number of vaccine available currently. Again, you know, I think that may be contingent upon the approval of one or two additional vaccines in the February-March timeframe. Now, that will certainly contribute significantly. But, you know, I think we have to also appreciate that these drug companies are manufacturing vaccine for the entire planet. And, you know, it's not just America, it's Europe, it's Australia, it's Asia, it's Africa and South America. We're talking about billions of people that need to be vaccinated. So again, you know, our hope is that we can get enough here in a timely enough fashion to avoid significant mutations of the virus that's going to evade the vaccine. They have plans for that, you know, kind of like we do for flu. But the faster we can get to that herd immunity, the better. I will also say, Commissioner, that I was very pleased to see the results of Carnegie Mellon survey yesterday indicating that Travis County was the only county in the state of Texas that survey respondents indicated that 85% of them were willing to get the vaccine. Number two and three, Hayes County and Williamson County. So central Texas should be very proud about that, but we're going to have a ways to go in terms of being able to get it to those numbers of individuals.
Thank you. Appreciate you all.
Commissioner Trevillian.
Good morning. I want to also thank Dr. S. Scott and, and Ms. Hayden as well, or I should say Hayden Howard as well, for, for the work that they've done. And I know that it is, it is stretching us to, to a new level of service, but I appreciate the things that you've done and the people that you've been willing to meet with to talk about how we move forward. So thank you for, for your time and effort. My questions are really going to be around, how do we help particularly our elderly population, which is not as comfortable with computers as our younger population, in getting through to working with our computer systems? Are there alternatives? Should we use 311 or some type of assistance line that allows them to get help, to make sure that they don't have to begin again several times? I've gotten several calls from elderly people who are saying, there's nobody to help me, and I don't know when I'm completed, and it seems to have made me start over four or five times, to the point that they stopped populating the program. So I wanted to, A, can we put some type of assistance line together? And how are we gauging if one gets a first shot, how they schedule a second shot, when and where that is scheduled? And, and then I'm still interested in seeing the shot distribution plan in the Eastern Crescent, and not only the distribution plan, but which ZIP codes are being served by the folks who get injections east? Because people can move to different parts of town. Want to make sure, because, you know, if we are, if people are using identification, we should be able to know their ZIP code of origin as well. I know I bundled a few in there, but let's start with, have we considered providing an assistance line? How can we help our seniors?
Well, we, we do have an assistance line. We do have 311 folks that are assisting as well. I think, you know, what we have seen is, is that we've seen, you know, quite a few folks that have called those lines. When we set up the portal, within two days, 25,000 folks had called those lines. And so one of the things that we have requested through the EOC is to set up a larger group of folks that will be able to, be able to return calls and take incoming calls. So we are working on a call center that will give us a larger footprint, because what we're seeing is, is that there is more of a need for that in our community. The second thing that we are going to be putting together, we had a meeting, for example, with, with AISD, parent support specialists. So we are going to develop a, like an FAQ type of guide for them and do some training. And basically, the training will be able to, if they have clients that they work with, it's going to help them to do some troubleshooting with them. And so we're going to share that information with our other partners that the department contracts with, as well as other users, because it's going to be important for us to be able to have the call centers set up, but then have the partners be able to, the folks that they work closely with, that they have a relationship with, that they're willing to help in this instance. So that is something that is underway.
I would like to, I would specifically like to help you with that particular project. I have a number of volunteers from various churches who specifically want to help their elderly community get registered.
Okay, great. One of the things that the county is working on, the county is working on that system for volunteers, and so that's really where we would want to plug them in when that is, when that is kind of up and running. But I can follow up with you, because if there's some folks that, you know, we can do the work with them now to get them, you know, trained and add them to that list, it'll be helpful to do that during this time.
What about the second shot schedule? Does that always happen after the first shot? Or is there some mechanism that is in place? I was specifically asked by some seniors who had taken the first shot, but didn't know about how to access a second shot.
So with the, with the second vaccine, they will either receive an email, a call, or a text message, and it's decided upon the method that they've asked to receive the updates. We are already starting to do some of those with the very first initial allocations that we received for 1A. And as you know, those were, those were closed pilots, because they were the 1A folks. And so we've already started that process. So they will, they will receive- So they will receive information about where they will need to go, and it's going to be based upon, you know, whatever points of decisions are open. So if they went to Daleco first and they want to go back to Daleco, we will send them back to Daleco to get that second vaccine. They went to Dove Springs and that's where they want to go, that's where they will go. If they come through Austin Public Health, Austin Public Health will provide that second vaccine to them.
It would be good to have another, that as a part of the frequently asked questions, just to make sure that there is a place that they can refer to and that they can call if they have questions that we haven't answered for. So that would be good. And then the distribution plan in the Eastern Crescent. Okay.
We're kind of running longer than we did yesterday. Can we do that in the second round? I'm sorry.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howard?
My questions were about volunteers, and Director Hayden Howard answered that, so I'm good.
That is a no question. Okay, awesome, thanks. So I've got one question. So we're fast approaching, basically, the one-year anniversary of living with COVID. And I really want to thank both of y'all, Dr. Esq., Dr. Hayden, for all that you and your teams have done 24/7 for the last year, basically, to keep our community safe. And it's really clear that Travis County and the city of Austin and all the cities in here have been spared some of the worst of COVID because of the science-based approach that you've guided us with, as well as the bold actions of Mayor Adler, now Senator Eckhart, and Judge Bisco before me. One thing, though, last week I mentioned my desire to have a website where people could go find basic information, like where can they get a vaccine? Who's eligible for the vaccine? And where are, where they can go? And then where they can sign up to become a volunteer? And my goal is to create a trusted and centralized place for all of Central Texas, the whole community, to get up-to-date COVID vaccination information. And instead of cities working individually on ways to communicate vaccine info, our goal is to have one website that encompasses everything as a collaboration of Travis County, the city of Austin, and surrounding cities. Sounds like this website's going to be up and running with Phase 1 of it, at least, and an FAQ by next Monday. And it's going to include links for folks who want to volunteer for the COVID response efforts that Director Hayden has been talking about. Just since it's, we're in Austin, Travis County was some of the most innovative and smart tech folks in the world. I'd love to see a website that reflects the potential in our community. And just want to offer again, is there anything that we can do as Travis County or as a community to help APH build out its website to be a little bit more user-friendly? I know that you've addressed some of those issues, but is there, you know, anything else we can do to help?
Well, I think if there are challenges that you may have heard about, it would be important for you to communicate that to us, and then we can share that with the communications team. And then they could look at how they could make changes to the website. But we must know what those problems are.
Okay, thanks. Mayor, I will pass it over to you now.
Great, thank you. We'll follow the same procedure that you did. We'll call the council members in the order of districts like we did last time. Everybody trying to ask one question. We'll see if we have time then to do a second round. I'm going to start people off here, but Kathy, I'll leave here in like three or four minutes so you can take over the recognizing of our colleagues in council district order. Let's begin with Councilmember Harper Madison. Do you have a question?
I do, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, for being on the call this morning. Director Hayden Howard and Dr. Esq., we appreciate your time. So my question is in alignment with the joint statement that was released this morning alongside some of my colleagues. We have lots of questions around equity with the distribution of vaccine and who's receiving them. Also, I want to echo the sentiment of Commissioner Trevillion around the volunteer base that we have prepared to mobilize and how we can utilize those people's time and talent and let them help us. But we recognize that our resources are finite. So having the community be a direct part of the solutions that we create just makes sense. So I really look forward to seeing us do more of that. So that said, I know that there are some initiatives that you addressed, Director Hayden Howard, and I'm really looking forward to seeing those manifest. I also had the opportunity with actually a lot of folks on the call, the opportunity to do a phone bank, reaching out to our elderly neighbors. And the response was really overwhelmingly positive. So I'm really looking forward to hearing more about what we have planned there. And just generally, wanting to know, you know, how are we doing with addressing the disparate impact based on race and equity? And in what direction do we plan to go to really make certain that we are delivering to the people who need it most?
I think one of the things that we have put in place in the department is is that we are working very closely with grassroots organization partners. Those partners are providing feedback to us, whether it's feedback about the system, to any concerns or questions. But they're also providing feedback to us about the experience that they are having. That pilot system that we established last week is working very well. We are hearing positive feedback from all of those partners. In one of our meetings yesterday evening, we talked about the need to expand that pilot. So we're going to be having conversations with our other partners. As you all are aware, the first three days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, when we receive the vaccines, we partner with Community Care, Lone Star Circle of Care, and Peoples. And so that was a successful pilot. However, one of the things that we are finding is that when links and et cetera are things like that are sent that are outside of Salesforce, those are shared with other people. And then as a result of that, we get people that show up to the appointment site that does not have an appointment. So we have to try to balance to make sure that we are, you know, continuing our efforts and make sure that it's seamless and being able to make sure that we are getting more people in that have been disproportionately affected by COVID. And so those, that is underway. We will continue to refine that and look at ways to improve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fuentes?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Director Hayden Howard and Dr. Esq., for all that you're doing. You know, I have several questions around the demographic data of the vaccines that have been administered, the dashboard, our workforce capacity, once we do have an increase in supply, if we have enough people hired or what our plans are around that. The at-home strategy, how quickly we can get that going while we're still in Phase 1? The distribution plan? But I'll keep it to one question. So I do want to center this in that we are in Week 7 of the vaccine rollout. For many in our community, they've experienced confusion and frustration with getting registered, finding up-to-date information, understanding what is going on, what all is available, navigating the website. And a lot of what we've been guided to say is to please be patient. Be patient while we wait the supply. And I think we're at a point where we have to do more and our community is expecting and demanding more. And where we can be transparent in what we're doing and what that plan looks like would be immensely helpful. Because right now, and I'm glad to hear we have a plan, but it would be even better if we can communicate that out to the community. We know what our maximum capacity is. We know the number of pharmacies we have in Austin, number of providers we have in Austin, where our clinics are located. And we should be, I feel like we should be able to model out for our community, if we receive this number of doses for this week, then we can distribute these amount of doses at these potential sites. And I understand that we're having to be very careful in how we navigate it. But I just want to impress upon everyone that our community is frustrated. They've seen the state data and how the vaccines are being inequitable administered or distributed. And we're seeing the inequity, not only in our state, but in many states throughout the country. And they want answers. And I think a way that we could help soothe the concerns while also saying, hey, be patient, is by saying, here's our plan, here's what we're doing, here's how we move forward. So all that to say, my question will be centered around, gosh, it's hard for me to pick one, honestly. I guess the, I'm going to switch to the at-home strategy. I know we talked about that last week, but how quickly can we get that out? Because the at-home strategy really is to help our elderly and would benefit most of our elderly to have that effort in place. If you could give us a tighter timeframe of what we need or what we're waiting on, that would be super helpful in us communicating that out. Thank you.
I think one of the things that, you know, is really important for us right now, because we are still in Stage 5, we would not want to add that component until we shift clearly to Stage 4. We're still doing some at-home testing, but not as much at-home testing as well, because we know people really need to, you know, have that status and if they're, you know, living multi-generational, et cetera. And so that is definitely in the works. And we'll be able to provide a little bit more information to you over the next couple of weeks when that will be implemented.
Thank you.
Councilor, if I can just add, you know, I appreciate your points about, and concerns of you and others about the equity of vaccine distribution across the state and certainly across the country right now. And we're right to be concerned about that. But I think it's important for our community to be aware that the demographics of the 65-plus age group look much different from the demographics of our community. You know, a lot of that obviously has to do with some of the social determinants of health. That means that 68.2% of people 65 or older in our community are white, not Hispanic. And, you know, because the CDC and the state has really directed the most focus on individuals over the age of 65, I think we're likely to see a predominantly white distribution across the state as we start working through the 1B group. As we go beyond that into the younger individuals in 1B and certainly 1C essential workers, it's going to shift and look much different. But, you know, the challenge we have right now is that, as Director Hayden Howard said, the data is not married to one another yet. It's living in lots of different pots. So we're hopeful that the state will be able to provide us the data on, from all the vaccine providers in Travis County that have given vaccines so far, so we can get a better idea of what it looks like across our entire community, not just what APH is doing.
Thank you all. Councilmember Entria?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple questions. One is, you know, the decision by, the ruling by the Texas Health Department on where you cannot concentrate on one particular ZIP code.
Councilmember, would you talk a little bit louder?
I'm sorry, I don't have, I'm like deep coffee there.
I know.
Mike in front of my face. With the ruling that the Texas Health Department made about not concentrating your distribution in one area, is that affecting us any?
Yes, Councilmember. Again, I think the determination from the state was you can't exclude populations from the vaccine. The vaccine is provided from the state and therefore, you know, we have to make it available to residents of the state. So really, you know, anybody can, anybody in the state of Texas can sign up to get a vaccine at Austin Public Health or any other hub across the state. What we're doing differently is, you know, we're prioritizing populations based upon those disproportionate impacts, but not excluding other people. So, you know, we've placed those sites in locations to provide ease of access. There's additional outreach to those vulnerable populations that may lack internet access. So there are other elements that we are utilizing to prioritize populations, but we can't exclude any individuals based on race, ethnicity, or ZIP code from getting the vaccine through our hub.
And also read that they are letting vets administer the vaccine to humans. Do you know if, are we taking advantage of that here in Travis County?
Councilmember, I believe the story I saw was that veterinarians had offered to do it. I'm not aware that the state has approved that. But, you know, again, as we look at our efforts to ramp up and scale up, we have to look at different options. We are lucky to have a large healthcare workforce here. As we see hospitalizations decline, it's going to increase the availability of traditional healthcare providers to help with vaccinations. We have 2,000 EMTs, EMS, from EMS and the Austin Fire Department that are credentialed and can help with vaccinations. So we do have layers of plan that we're utilizing. Nursing students, medical assistants, all sorts of different levels of individuals that can be utilized. Certainly, we'll keep all the options on the table and utilized so we need to get vaccine out.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you, Dr. Esq. And so that is, it sounds as if you're saying the personnel is not limited. At this point, it's really the vaccine.
That's correct.
Councilmember Kassar?
Thanks. I want to pick up on the point that Dr. Esq. was making about the over-65 population. You know, some information that we received showed that on some of APH's vaccination days, something like 20% or so of the vaccines were getting to Latinos, Latino seniors. And you're right that only about 20% of our over-65 population is Latino. And so that seems to line up. But at the same time, when the hospitalizations are in the high 30s or in the 40s, and we're trying to mitigate risk, even if you're matching the numbers demographically, that doesn't necessarily mean we're matching the level of risk that the community is facing. Those same numbers show that for the Black community, the numbers actually didn't meet the demographic share of our seniors. That was for some of the days. But my understanding is that on some other days that we haven't input yet, where you were working with Community Care and with Lone Star Circle of Care, you were actually well exceeding potentially the demographics, getting into the 30% for Latinos and also exceeding demographic makeup of Black seniors, which I think is really promising as a strategy. So I'm happy to give up some time or space for y'all to explain a little bit more about what you might, how we can help continue to expand that, or I can just leave it here for your thought that even if we are able to hit the percentage of seniors in our communities of color, given the increased risk, I think we want to be able to go above and beyond, especially because I think it's reasonable to suspect that many private providers are not going to fulfill those needs. So I'd be interested, but because you have some data that shows where we're not quite making where we want to get to, but then it sounds like with some of these partnerships with clinics, we are actually going above and beyond, I'd be interested in what it might take for us to expand that strategy without running afoul of the state, as Councilmember Entria mentioned.
Well, Councilmember, you know, I agree. And as Director Hayden Howard mentioned, we're looking at different strategies down the road to help us navigate that and get to the to help us navigate that and get to the right groups of folks. I met with Councilmember Kelly last week in another group to talk about, you know, building strategy around construction workers. So, you know, we know construction workers have been hit hard by COVID-19. Now, they tend to fall in the younger age group. But when the time comes for that 1C group and we are looking to vaccinate essential workers, how can we focus on groups like that that are primarily from communities of color that's going to really help ramp up that effort? So, again, we're certainly happy to have further discussions on strategies of how to identify particular groups like that that we may be able to build on to ensure that we have penetration of our vaccine strategy.
Thank you, Dr. Esq. Councilmember Kitchen.
Thank you. I want to focus on the functionality of Salesforce. And thank you, Director Hayden Howard. I know you all are focusing on being responsive to the feedback that you're receiving. So I want to be specific and just to share, I know you all have heard this, but I just want to share this publicly. What I'm hearing is that there is a great deal of anxiety and confusion and a sense of unfairness about the way that the system works right now to sign up at Austin Public Health. And my concern is that we are not at scale with our system in our ability to schedule people. And that as we, and we're not going to be ready as we get more vaccines. And I think that the fundamental issue that we haven't talked about specifically from a functionality perspective is how people get scheduled for appointments. There's a sense that there's a lottery system right now. People don't know when and how to sign back on to get an appointment. And so they are trolling, you know, they're guessing what day and they're trolling and trying 50, 60 times to get in. And then they're frustrated because they don't know what that window is for them to sign up. And that's a problem, that's a, I'm also hearing, just to give you some great feedback that I'm hearing, is that those folks that have been able to get through feel like the system at the Delco Center is great. And once they get there, they can get through and they really respect and appreciate the work that's happening. But we got to do something about this Salesforce system. And let me just say, I would like to suggest, we live in a tech community. We live in a community with folks that are experts at high-capacity, high-capacity technology systems. And I would hope that we take advantage of them and let them help us. And so I just want to mention a couple of specifics. I know you guys are working on, and you've already made some improvements in terms of what the screens say and how you sign on and things like that. But that's not getting to the fundamental problem, which is how people get scheduled. So there's a couple of functionalities that I would suggest, and maybe you, maybe y'all are working on this, and I just don't know. But there's a couple of functionalities that I would suggest that we make sure that we try to incorporate and that we use our best minds in the city of Austin to do that. And one of them is the ability to tie the scheduling function to triage so that it goes to the next person in line if there's excess vaccination. Another one is an SMS function for alert and scheduling. People should be able to get a text that tells them when it's time to schedule. Even better is people should be able to get a text that says, you are scheduled for this date and time. So that people don't have to guess, nor do they have to proactively try to schedule themselves. We also would be helpful if we had a high-capacity help and support function. We've all done things online, or a lot of us have done things online, where, you know, you're online on a website and what pops up is a chat and says, can we help you? And real-time, right there, you can get help. So, these are the kinds of things that are prevalent in high-capacity systems. They're prevalent in purchasing systems. They're prevalent in our doctors' offices. You know, the UT Health Center system texts people and tells them when their appointment. Texts them with a reminder. So, I don't know, maybe we're trying to work that out with Salesforce. I know it can be difficult to add functionality to an existing system, but let's don't try to do that ourselves. Let's put together the best minds in our city that are technology experts. Because we got to get this system to where it can really handle a lot, a lot, a lot of people. And right now, I think people can be patient. People, I think people really want, but, but they don't know. Right now, we've set up a system that doesn't allow them to be patient. Because the only way they can get an appointment is if they do something. And the do-something that they have to do, they feel is unfair and it's a lottery system and they don't know how to sign up and they have trouble signing up. So anyway, I'm sorry, Kathy's saying I need to wind up.
Oh, sorry.
You're right. I'm sorry. I apologize.
These are really good points and terrific suggestions. And I think you had asked our.
So here's the question, Kathy. So the functionality.
What is in progress?
Yeah, the functionality that I named, those three or four places, are we working on any of that functionality? And the second related question, are we working with our technology community to help us?
Most of those things are in the works. They are working on those. We are working with an external consultant, as well as we are using our Austin Public Health staff and our CPM staff. And so those are the folks that have been assigned to work on this. You know, as the vendor, Salesforce is the external vendor that interfaces with Salesforce. And so that vendor was added once we started working on vaccine management systems.
So two quick follow-ups. Are we working with our technology community?
Is your question, are we working with someone outside of the city that's not hired by the city, that's not on a contract with the city?
Yes.
The answer to that would be no, we are not.
Okay. Second question, are we working on scheduling? Are we working on making sure that this system will do the scheduling?
Yes, that is one of the areas that I mentioned today that they are working on. I think my other caution for you about just giving a person an appointment time, there are pros and cons of that. The way we've set up is, is we give the person the option to pick the best appointment that works for them. So, I can take back your feedback. I'm sure I have staff that are listening that could consider that. But we, you know, I will have that discussion with my team.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate what you all are doing.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you very much, Dr. Esq., for being here today. The hard work that you and Director Hayden are doing is invaluable. I also wanted to quickly thank you for the meeting that you took with us last week. I think that we're going to make great progress with the construction workers. And we're really going to see a difference in the way that the vaccines are being distributed with the plans that you've laid out. My question is switching gears a little bit. It's more about the alternate care site. I was wondering if you had an update on if we were getting anyone from outside of the city of Austin staying there? What the current occupancy looked like and how the funding was happening? Thank you.
So councilmembers, currently 28 in the ACS as of yesterday. 17 additional ones had been treated and discharged. Right now, it's, there are patients coming just from the MSA. We have had discussions about expanding to potentially take other patients. The two particular areas that, where we may see patients or desire to send patients from would be Waco and College Station. Both of those trauma service areas are inundated with COVID-19 patients still. So, we're in discussions with the state on that to help with that issue and to discuss the financial implications. They have created a system to reserve ambulances for patients who may need to come from other areas and then be taken back to other areas with Acadian Ambulance Service. So these discussions are happening. But I think as our hospitals locally improve, then we do still have the opportunity to help serve other jurisdictions who are still under stress by utilizing that ACS. But I agree that we need to ensure that the funding stream is there to support that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dr. Esq. I am not seeing Councilmember Poole. I now do. Hi, Councilmember Poole.
Overshouted by the beautiful tree. Couple quick answer questions for y'all. What week of allocation are we in? Are we in week eight? Dr. Esq.
Week seven.
We are in week seven. And how many doses have we gotten every week? Is it 12,000 every week?
Yes, ma'am. 12,000 this week. We're expecting 12,000 next week. After next week, then we transition into the time for the second doses of the large volume. So, we're not clear what that week is going to look like, but we're anxious to have this discussion with the state.
Can you, do you have any idea why it is that the state of Texas has fallen short of requesting the maximum number of doses from the feds? Evidently, it's just Texas and two other states that are at the very bottom of the heap with regard to the consistent ask being falling short. We're not getting as much as we could, in other words, at the state level. The state is not requesting its maximum. Any ideas?
I do not know the answer to that, councilmember. I will say that if they request the maximum, we'll be happy to take the maximum.
According to, according to the CDC reports out of the CDC. I think that's significant and I want, I just want to highlight that. You know, we're all focused really hyper-locally. And I've been trying to push my viewpoint a little bit further out and I stumbled upon a couple of reports coming out of the statistics at the Centers for Disease Control. And it turns out the state of Texas is not requesting the larger amount of doses that they could. So I'll just leave that there and maybe some of our good friends in the fourth estate can pick that up and run with it. But I think that's significant. And you guys aren't responsible for that, so it was really a rhetoric. That at-home strategy, I'm wondering if we might be able to do a couple of things like activate our Affordable Care Act navigators. We have an intact group of people who did a lot of signups for Affordable Care Act in the past. We had contracts with them. I just am curious if that, if we've activated them or if that's even a possibility. And what about a mobile vaccination van? I know we do mobile dental clinics that move around on the east side specifically. And at some point, when we are able to do something a little bit more mobile, could we activate some mobile vaccination vans?
Councilor, yes, that, you know, the plan is for mobile vaccination. In fact, you know, again, we're working right now to identify those nursing homes or long-term care facilities that may have fallen in the gaps with the intention of sending teams out there to vaccinate those. But we have existing vendors that do at-home testing for us. So part of the discussion is to transition some of those resources into mobile vaccination to get, you know, the elderly who are at home, the disabled who are at home, that are just, you know, very challenged by getting out to one of the vaccination sites.
And that gap that you're talking about, does that include elderly people who are not in a long-term care facility but are home, in their own homes? Because I think there was, they were falling through the gaps as well.
Yes, councilmember. Right now, we're looking for the, you know, the larger volumes of folks. So those assisted living facilities, group homes, and those sorts of places that are going to have a number of individuals. And then, you know, also looking at those who are at home by themselves or being cared for by family members.
The state prohibits hubs from further distributing the serum doses that we get. Is there any update on that? Some of the comments that we were hearing from the communities sort of opened the door to why can't we widen the bottleneck of distribution that we have? And my understanding is that's because the state is limiting. If we get 12,000 doses only, we can administer those 12,000 doses.
Yeah, councilmember, the design of the hub model was not really a hub-and-spoke. It wasn't designed to then take it and distribute it out to other providers. It was, you know, it was really a hubs model. And we're hopeful that in the coming weeks, we will see additional hubs identified and for vaccine to be available there. Again, the only other sizable site that has received vaccine this week in Travis County is the Delmon Medical School. So, again, we're hopeful that that will change and that we'll see some broader availability. But that may not happen, you know, for several weeks.
And then my last question is, looking into the future, which is the guidance we expect to get from the federal government. And now that folks like Dr. Fauci are effectively acting within that frame, what about the federal guidance do we expect? And do we have any idea about when those changes might happen? So that we're planned, that we are planning in order, keeping ourselves nimble so whatever guidance comes down from the federal government, which we know will happen, that we will be able to pivot and accommodate those changes very quickly?
So, councilmember, we've already seen some pivoting happening. We saw some direction from the federal government, which opens the window for that second dose up to 45 days. And, you know, we are, as Director Hayden Howard said, we are talking to other provider partners, particularly the ones that have the ability to larger scale. We are also looking at large public drive-through sites and working through the process to evaluate those should we need to ramp up tenfold, for instance. So, it's all in process. Again, a success for us, councilmember, would be to know what we're getting next week and then the week after.
Right.
Two weeks, you know, advance those would be fantastic. Because it would really help. You know, I want to recognize the Lieutenant Governor in his letter regarding this because, you know, he hit the nail on the head. Having at least a couple of weeks gives us the ability to say, okay, these 24,000 people, you got a spot sometime in the next two weeks. And it starts to decrease that anxiety issue. It starts to allow us to do things like, okay, you register, you qualify, schedule now, rather than waiting on that second email or text to come to tell you that you can schedule. So we're hopeful that even we, you know, that we can get some even short-term projections on availability, so we can start to do some of those things to reduce the frustration.
Terrific. Thanks so much.
Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Councilmember Poole. Those questions from Councilmember Poole lead very well into some of the questions that I was thinking. Given that we have 12,000 arriving soon and another 12,000 on the way, how many of those are going to be for second-round vaccinations? How many for first round? And what is the expectation for people who have pre-registered to understand when they might look for an email? Just so that they can be more vigilant about checking on it and making sure they know when they're up for an appointment to be scheduled?
I think I need to probably make one correction. We are aware of the 12,000 this week. We're hoping that we will get 12,000 next week. We typically don't receive that notification until the Thursday before the Monday of receiving that. So what we are aware of for this week is the 12,000 only. And so typically, we set up a couple of days of appointments and make sure we do the management of the system. Because typically, we will schedule so many per day, but we have to have a level of flexibility. And so being able to do the. And so being able to do those counts at the end of the night. And then we release the rest of the appointments for the remainder of the week. So we've released the appointments for Wednesday, and those are filled. And so what we will do is, is that we will release some additional appointments on tomorrow for the remainder of the week.
Okay. And so it's not the Thursday that you know you're going to expect them, that you're trying to get people signed up for Monday morning. You're waiting till Monday when they arrive to try to schedule?
Yes, because what we've seen in other jurisdictions is other jurisdictions schedule clinics anticipating that they would receive the vaccine on that Monday, and they did not do that. So they had to cancel those clinics. So for us, we make sure that the vaccine is in hand, not en route, but it is in hand that we have it and that we have accounted for it. And then from there, we release appointments based on that.
I see. And so do you send everyone who might be available an email on that Monday or that Wednesday? Or how do you handle that if people say they aren't receiving an email when it's time to schedule? Is that a system glitch or a process that I need to understand better?
Yeah, that is one of the areas that our team is working on. They had been receiving emails, and it does fill up really quickly. And the emails go to folks that are eligible to receive the vaccine.
Okay. And do they come at the same time? So do they come at 6:00 AM, 8:00 AM? Is it sometime through the day, just so people can be aware if they need to be on their computer at 8:00 AM, that they make sure to wake up and, you know, get logged in so they can wait for that?
I will have to get with my team to determine exactly the time of day that we're releasing those and get back with this group. And I'll post it where everyone on can see the answer to that question.
Okay. And then, in my first question about what percentage is a second round versus a first round, do you have a best guess on, you know, is it half and half? Is it 30/60? How, 40/60? I'm doing my math correctly.
No, no. Typically, what, are you asking about the second vaccine within the 12,000, for example? Are you asking about that? Is that your question?
Yes, second, you know, second dose versus first dose when we get a batch.
Yeah, so typically, you receive your allocation says 12,000, but you will also receive another allocation that is specific to second doses only. And you receive it around the timeframe that you should be administering it. So those will, those will potentially come together.
Okay, so that number that we're getting is for the first round, and then you, as public health, know the second round is coming because the commitment initially for the first rounds qualify you to get the next round when that's available. So that's not in the 12,000. That's additional.
That's additional.
Okay. That's, that's great and very helpful. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to Councilmember Tovo.
Yeah, thank you. That is very helpful. And, you know, I think someone earlier, maybe Commissioner Trevillion, it was within your questions, talked about developing an FAQ. And, you know, I think among, among all of the questions we've asked, we have a really good basis for, for an FAQ. I know some of that is available online in the VAC facts and some of the other materials you've put together, but colleagues, I've been wondering if it wouldn't be helpful for us to kind of send these questions through the COVID portal that we have to our staff so that they can use them as they continue to develop and refine those, those FAQs that they're putting out to the public. I think we can be, you know, we've, we've developed one in my office, but there are just still questions I can't provide the answer to. Like, for example, if you, if you have registered for the system but haven't gotten an email, what should you do next? Or if you have registered and you're still having errors and you've tried the .aph, but it's still not working, what should you do next? So I think some of those collectively, I think we've all heard from constituents who can help, help us anticipate most of, most of the issues others are, are going to be facing. So my question is related to that last one. First of all, thank you. I know that we are, we have a phone number on the website available for people who need assistance in registering with the system. And, you know, thank you to the staff who were, who were fielding all of those thousands and thousands and thousands of calls over those first couple of days. That's really indes... As you move toward the telephone assistance, Director Hayden Howard, that you described earlier, is there going to be an effort to, to kind of bifurcate those calls so that you've got one line for individuals who may need help registering and then one line for those who are having technical issues that really need tech support walking through it? I understand sometimes those may be one in the same, but for, for individuals who do not have access, who need that phone line to register, may be able to be helped with, with someone with different, different level of information than somebody who's really helping troubleshoot those technological problems?
Yes, the goal is, is to split those into two because they are different questions that folks have from an IT perspective.
Great, thank you. And I echo the, I think, I've forgotten now who mentioned it, maybe several people mentioned the idea of having volunteers. I know, just as a reminder, many of us have, have done some senior outreach during this period of time and have some good networks of volunteers who are willing to, willing and ready. Just got an email from, from one of them a couple of days ago, willing and ready to help. So as there are ways to plug in that aren't, that aren't requiring medical training and those kinds of things, please let us know. Councilmember Alter, I think you're the last on our dais.
This is the IT department. We are having some technical issues, and we would like you guys to take like a five or 10-minute break. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure. Thank you for that. Thank you for that news.
Sorry for the interruption.
So you'd like us to kind of take a recess for about 10:50 and then sign back? Shall we sign in and out? Or would you like us just to remain in place?
If you would remain in place, we just need to do things from the back end.
Great. So I guess...
Let's shoot for 10:50.
And can we just clarify, Joyce, do you need us to keep our cameras or our audio on or just mute?
Nope, you're good. Just stay where you're at. The control computer had to be rebooted, which gave the audio feed, so the audio feed is not going out to the public.
So I'll recess the council portion of the meeting until 10:50.
That would be great. And then Judge Brown, if you could recess Commissioners Court for 10:50, that would be great. And again, my apologies for interrupting.
So I'll reconvene the meeting of the city council meeting at 10:50.
Hey, Judge, we're ready to go.
Should I go ahead, Councilmember Tovo, or does the court need to reconvene as well?
I assume they need to reconvene as well.
I sort of heard you faintly. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Judge Brown, I reconvened the city council meeting. I think we're waiting for you to reconvene the Commissioners' meeting.
Oh, thank you. Paul, are we live now? Okay. All right. So we're going to reconvene the Commissioners' Court meeting at 10:51 AM along with the joint meeting with city council. Mayor Protim Tovo, is that, are you, I kind of lost the feeds, I'm not sure where y'all ended up.
Sure. Yeah, we ended up with Councilmember Alter. It's her turn to ask some questions or ask a question.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So I really appreciate the great questions of all of our colleagues and the Commissioners this morning. What I've noticed is that, you know, they all focus on process improvements at different stages in the process, whether it's registering, signing up for appointments, getting vaccine, getting the second vaccine, and how we reach particular populations who are at most risk. And I think, you know, these are the questions that we need to be asking, and I appreciate our staff and all of their efforts to adapt and iterate, especially in a climate of very limited supply and high anxiety. I want to focus in my remarks slash question on those that have registered. And I want to first make a suggestion, and then I want to ask a question. So we've been hearing a lot from folks who got their first vaccine, who want more information about the second vaccine. And it seems like there are two places where we might be able to communicate better that I think would be pretty easy fixes. One is that, and forgive me if you're already doing this, but I'm, I haven't, I'm not eligible yet, so I haven't been through the process myself, just hearing from constituents. So one area would be at the time of the vaccination, when you give them their card, providing instructions about what they should expect to happen and how they will be contacted for their appointment for their second dose. I know we give them the vaccination card. I don't know if we can give them another little piece of paper. What I'm hearing is that we're getting lots of questions because people don't have the information. And it seems for at least this stage that that's not a complicated set of answers. It's just people don't have the information, and they're clogging the lines that are keeping us from helping others. The second place for intervention with respect to the folks who have, are anticipating their second dose, do receive an email that says, you know, thank you for showing up to your appointment, but it doesn't tell them the information they need to know about, you know, your second dose comes at X number of weeks later, and this is what you should expect. You should expect to be contacted by the same method in X number of weeks to sign up for your appointment, assuming that the state gets us the vaccines in time and we will provide communications accordingly. I think both of those would be easy places to make interventions. You are already sending out an email, and you are already providing the cards. What we're hearing is that people at the vaccination centers that are helping can't answer the questions about what they're getting, you know, what do they do for the second dose once they've gotten their first dose and they're there. So I think that's an area where we could address things fairly easily and also to have a clear statement for us all to communicate out for those second doses, understanding that you should go back to the same place you were at to get your second dose. My question, though, is we also have another group of people that were frustrated and lost trust in the system because of technical difficulties registering, many of whom registered but didn't know about the .aph fix. And so then they haven't been able to get an appointment. But it's not clear to me what we're doing to communicate with those people and rebuild that trust and help them to understand what the next steps are in the process. So I'm not sure I see our Health Director on, but if somebody on staff can speak to how we can better communicate with that group and what we are doing to rebuild that trust and get them in for their appointments, assuming they're eligible.
Staff have been making calls out to clients, being proactive. So if they left a message, et cetera, staff have been doing that. So if they've not received a call, maybe it'd just be helpful, if you have that information, just forward it to me and I'll send it to my team, and they can, I can make sure they call them. Because other colleagues have done that, that sit on the council, they've sent them to me if they, you know, have a question, and that's fine for you to send that to me.
So just for us to send you people who haven't gotten their questions answered?
Yes, that would be fine. That'll be fine.
Okay. Is there any opportunity for us to be proactive with, I mean, it seems to me on the back end, we ought to be able to see people who registered but then didn't get to the point of making their appointment during that particular period prior to that fix where we were seeing those problems and proactively reach out to them with directions on what we want them to do next, or telling them, you are in the system and you will get an appointment as soon as you're, you know, we have enough vaccine for that. I don't know the magnitude of the number of people there.
Well, what, what I said is, is that staff did go back and they did make those calls, going back to the 13th of January, making those calls, making sure they answered those questions. So there may be some folks that either were not there when they called. They typically call and they will leave a message and let you know that we're calling from Office of Public Health, and, you know, we're providing this information and just checking in. And so that's based upon folks that have called us early on, that may have emailed us early on, the staff are proactively doing that, but then also, as they're receiving those calls that are coming in, they're answering those as well.
Okay, so just, just to be clear, because I might have misunderstood, then you, you believe that APH has proactively reached out to people who were having problems in the early stages when the system crashed, et cetera, who reached out by phone or by email to APH? Is that correct?
We've, we've sent quite a bit of that. I need to check and see if it was every user. So that's going to be my question back to staff.
Okay.
Was it every user that we have made sure that the .aph is in there? I know we've done some proactive stuff by, by sending that .aph on the username and then messaging that out. So I need to just double-check, has that happened with all of the users?
Okay, I think that, that would be helpful because it would be helpful for us to be able to say, we understand people were frustrated and whatever, and we've gone back and done the due diligence to get back in touch with those people to rebuild that trust. And so I don't know if there's a group of people that didn't call and that didn't email that were in that boat and just didn't have the savvy to call or to, to email. I just, I don't know that. And then would, do you think you could make some of those improvements for folks who are awaiting their second dosage and are, that I mentioned earlier?
Yes, I will get with the team to address when we open up on Wednesday, to make sure that that's clear and that the folks that are at the site have that information, because it sounds like a training, a need for additional training. And so we'll...
Yeah, I think...
...provide that in their, in their communications, because people are going to ask when they're coming through. And so, you know, we just need to make sure that every day, maybe I'm giving too much information, but, but every day, because we have a host of volunteers that are providing the vaccine, those are probably typically the people that they are asking. So we will include that in their on-time training at the site, because it's probably the person that's providing you the vaccine of who they may be asking that question to. So we'll make sure that everyone is trained and has that up-to-date information about the second vaccine.
So I think that's great, but I also would just suggest that if we can have it in writing for people, you know, we have people who may have memory issues and other kinds of things, and, and it just being able to walk home with a piece of paper that says it or with that follow-up to be able to have it clarified, I think could save a lot of the other calls that are coming in to APH and to all of our offices as well. So that would be my suggestion to consider ways to do that.
We can, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judge Brown, that concludes our first round of questions. I'm not sure how much...
All right, thank you. I think we have a little bit more time if we want to try to do a speed round of one question each. I think we could do this. Commissioner Gomez, do you have another question?
No, I think I've heard enough answers to kind of answer some of my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Shay? Thank you.
I did get a question from someone, and I apologize if this has been answered, but I missed it. Is there a plan to utilize the second vaccine early so that we can get more people vaccinated on the belief that additional vaccines will be produced by the time that people need the second shot?
Commissioner, the answer is no. We intend to use the second doses for second doses. Until we see a shift in the indications from the federal government, from the manufacturers, that there's going to be a surge of additional vaccine available, then we'll, we'll use it as intended.
That's my question.
Commissioner Trevillion?
I'll pass. I got my questions out and make sure that we can get to all of our other colleagues.
Thank you. Commissioner Howard?
No questions.
All right. I think my only question is, at some point, I'm guessing y'all are doing this internally, but maybe at some point we could get with Councilmember Kitchen and myself, and I know Commissioner Howard's interested in this, and figure out some, like a deadline for the people who are working on the backend of the website to say, okay, if we can do the things that Councilmember Kitchen and others outlined by, I don't know, February 15th or some date, and if not, then maybe we need to go a different direction. And I'm not asking for you to give me a date right now, just that might be a good way to proceed with the website, to set a timeline for doing the things that we wanted to do. I don't know that that's a question, that's just a free advice. So I will pass it back over to, I believe the mayor is out, so pass it back to you, Councilmember Tovo.
Thank you very much, Judge Brown. So hopefully we'll have time to go through one last round of questions, but colleagues, I think we're really close to the end of time, so if we could have real short, real short speed round, I think the judge termed it, beginning with Councilmember Harper-Medison.
Thank you, Councilmember Tovo. I think because of my circumstances currently, I'm having some tech issues and so I'm having to be outdoors, I don't think it's really conducive to asking a question and having it be, so I'll ask offline. Thank you.
Sure thing. Councilmember Fuentes?
Thank you, Councilmember Tovo. So my question about the call center operations, I know you mentioned that we are staffing out the number of call operators that we have on staff, but if you could talk us through and that they'll be helping schedule folks, but what is the breakdown or the plan for having operators who are available 24/7 to assist any, to take calls, to assist with any questions that come up, whether tech or about scheduling or appointments? So on one end, just answering calls with questions, and then on the other end, that proactive reaching out to our elderly who need to get signed up and getting them scheduled? Can you talk us through the plan on both of those ends? Because I know a lot of folks are calling and they're getting the busy signal and all sorts of things.
Well, the reason why we moved that over to the Emergency Operations Command Site is that we know we need a larger footprint than Austin Public Health has. And so that team will be meeting and making decisions about the number of people that should be answering those calls, the hours of when the people should be answering those calls, so all of those things would be determined. Right now, I do not have the answer to that question. As that information is put together and we've identified the folks who would potentially be working that area, as well as hours of operations, we will provide that in communication back to this group of people.
Well, I really don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for the work that you've been doing. You know, it's very frustrating, the way the rollout happened, and it's unfortunately that, you know, it wasn't any of our fault, you know, locally. It was, so I just want to say thank you all and keep up that work. I know it's very difficult.
Any further questions? Question about the positivity rate in the Latino community remains, you know, high and really high. And of course, disproportionate numbers of cases, but you don't have quite as high a positivity rate even in other groups that have high cases. Do we have reason to believe that it is also because of a lower rate of testing? Because the positivity rate is not just how many people have the virus, but how many people are going and getting tested? When we look at the raw number of tests, do we have reason to believe that some of that positivity rate is driven still by a lower rate of going and getting tested when you feel sick?
So Councilmember, the positive rate is going to be dependent upon the testing effort in each of those individual demographics. You know, that's why we see higher numbers in the less-than-one age group, because the only people that are symptomatic are getting tested, similar to the 80-plus age group. Same thing is true for race and ethnicity. You know, I think one of the things that is contributing to the positivity in the Latinx community is the volume of individuals that are essential workers. And, you know, because we know that this disease is spread through face-to-face interactions that are, you know, particularly non-protected interactions, we've seen this pattern throughout where the Latinx community is the first to rise and the last to fall on our recovery. So again, I'm hopeful that as our vaccine efforts continue, that we can focus on those essential workers, which, you know, have a concentration of Latinx members, so that we can start to address some of that disease spread that we're seeing. Because we also know there's an impact on, you know, on older age groups in those multi-generational households. So again, we're hopeful that we can transition to that Phase 1 C soon.
Thank you, Dr. Eschott. Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes. First, let me say, Judge, I'd be happy to work with you and our staff if there's anything I can do to help, and I know others would be interested also, you know, with regard to the functionality of our system and connections to our tech community. I want to, I have a question for Dr. Eschott. I think that you had shared some information about, I think it was 80-plus-year-olds, if I remember correctly, that were continuing to go up in terms of infections or getting the virus. So my question is, do we know from the data if those are seniors living in the community or if they're seniors living in long-term care places? I can't remember if the data that you're sharing with us has both, it has both sources.
Councilmember, it does have both sources. Again, when we look at the nursing home and long-term care facility dashboard, 332 new cases in that community, we can see if we can break it down in that 80-plus age group home versus facility and get that information to you.
Thank you. I would just find that interesting because I think it might help us understand where we're seeing most risk, you know? And I know we're focusing on, we're focusing on vaccinating people living in long-term care facilities, and that may be where we're seeing the most risk. But I would just want to understand the degree to which we're seeing risk for people, older people living at home, and if we are seeing a significant risk there, I would hope that we might have a mechanism for, you know, for expediting how we can reach those folks. So, thank you.
Yeah. And Councilmember, I think that's, that triggers a good reminder to our community that if you're living in a household with individuals who are 65 or older or who are high-risk for complications, your decisions, your actions should be more protective, because not only you're protecting yourself, you're protecting those more vulnerable individuals in your household. We have been seeing lots of household spread, and, you know, again, we need the whole family unit in those kind of families to protect each other.
That brings us to Councilmember Ellis. No, my apologies. Councilmember Kelly had to leave for another work obligation. That brings us to Councilmember Poole.
Thanks. And I got all my questions into the first lightning round, and just my thanks to everybody and appreciation for all the ongoing efforts. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellis?
Thank you, Councilmember Tovo. I had a question about the chart that showed the breakdown in school districts of how many cases or individuals in quarantine. Are you receiving that information just one number per school district, or are you getting information about elementary school, middle school, high school, you know, and staff categories? I think it would be helpful for us to be able to share that information with our constituents in case, you know, parents have two high schoolers, for instance, and they're trying to gauge safety levels of them, you know, going to see their friends or participating in activities. Do you have that information and can you either share it with us or is that somewhere that I can access?
So Councilmember, we do have the information. We will not be sharing that information because local health departments aren't doing that in jurisdictions generally. I will say that each of the school districts have a breakdown by each school, and there's a link to that on our APH website. I think the advice for parents should be this, there is uncontrolled widespread community transmission of COVID-19. So generally speaking, if their activity involves, you know, being within six feet, in particular, within six feet without a mask, it should be discouraged right now regardless of where that child goes to school.
I appreciate that, and I want to say thank you for always giving us reasonable and practicable safety precautions that we can take as individuals. I know it must be hard over this past year to hear misinformation and to feel like you have to constantly combat that. So I really appreciate you telling us how we can stay safe, how we can keep our loved ones safe, because you're just trying to share the information that is most reasonable, and I really appreciate you sticking to it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. And I really have no further questions either, just a suggestion, if this isn't already happening, that our innovation team might be really helpful in that conversation too about how to structure the response system and the website, some of the website changes with regard to registration. And I'll just say, I'll add to Councilmember Ellis's appreciation and say how helpful it's been too to have that consistent message to our community that, you know, we are, it is, we are all anxious for as many people in our community to get the vaccine as possible, but it is, you know, it is necessary to continue to do those practices while we wait, that everything is in place to get those vaccines to people as quickly as possible once we have enough, but it is that supply limitation. So to the extent that we can all continue to help you amplify that message, you know, I know we will. Councilmember Alter, you are our last question in the speed round.
Thank you. And my question just centers around some data, and I'm trying to understand, I found very powerful the framing of saying that we've received less than 2% of the vaccine that we need for our community. But I would love to understand, you know, how much we have relative to who we know is in 1A or 1B, and I don't know if we know, if we know how many people we're anticipating in 1A and 1B. I'd love to know, you know, relative to those two categories, how much vaccine we have. Absent that, if we could say we have X number of people who are over 65 and we have this much vaccine, I don't know. Would you help me to be able to think about it in those terms? Because I just found that having that less than 2% was very powerful, and I know that people are frustrated, but, you know, a lot of this has to do with the supply more than anything else, and we have to communicate the magnitude of the gap to people.
Councilmember, I have those numbers, I just don't have them right here. The state on their vaccine dashboard, if you go to Travis County, you can click on 1A, 1B over 65, 1B 16 to 64, and it does provide those numbers that can tell you it's two or 300,000 people in 1B and 1A. It's a big number.
And so, go ahead.
And, you know, we've got, you know, again, even within that group, it's, you know, we've received so far through the mass vaccination, somewhere around 10% of the people who currently qualify. So it's a small number. It's going to take time just to get through the 1As and 1Bs.
So I think it would be really helpful if we could be provided that in our nightly messaging, because, you know, it's, everyone's anxious to get it, and we're actually very fortunate, as you mentioned earlier, that such a high percentage of our community wants to get vaccinated, and we want to keep them wanting to do that. But we absolutely need to convey that much of this has to do with the supply, and it was always anticipated that the supply would come in slowly. It's just a frustrating process. And, you know, I just repeat that because I think our staff is doing everything they can to roll this out as smoothly as possible, but we do not control that supply. And it is important to communicate transparently, and I think that kind of number could help us to do that.
We'll work on that, Councilmember. I think it's a great idea. I'll also mention that in our 10-minute break, I pulled up the news and Johnson &amp; Johnson has indicated their submission of their data early next week. So again, the Johnson &amp; Johnson is a single-dose vaccine, which could be a game changer in terms of the ability to vaccinate, particularly because it decreases the logistical heavy lift of trying to get that second shot scheduled and for people to show up for a second shot. So we'll be anxiously awaiting that data next week.
Many thanks. So that concludes our council questions. Judge?
All right. Thanks. And Manager Kronk, I may have missed it with the cutting out, but did you have anything? Did you want to say anything today? I just wanted to give you a chance if you did, otherwise.
No, again, just Judge and councilmembers, commissioners, really appreciate this opportunity to have staff present new information and to respond to questions. I did want to just chime in and echo the final comments that Councilmember Alter made on the need for that additional communication that we can all amplify around the supply. And so even if there's good news that might be coming on the horizon, that is still very much in the out weeks, and so right now it is very much dependent on what we are receiving from the federal and state levels. And so the more that we can all be united and urging the patients, and we will get the vaccine distributed as soon and effectively as we receive them, but we are only receiving a very small proportion relative to the need that is out there. So really thank everyone for their support, the coordinated work that's happening across our community, and we will get through this and we will get through it together. Thank you, Judge.
Excellent. Yeah, and thank you, and thank you again, Director Hayden and Dr. Eschott for, I mean, there are so many really positive things. We have the alternate care site, we have a regional infusion center, you're getting out 12,000 vaccines a week. Don't want it to go unnoticed of all the hard work and the great things that y'all are doing. So Councilmember Tovo, I'll pass it back to you to close out your meeting, and then I'll close out mine.
Sure thing. Well, thank you, commissioners, for letting us join. I think this is an idea that I know we had discussed back in June, early on, just hoping this portion of our meetings be joined, and I'm glad we finally started doing it. I think it's an efficient and effective way to have these conversations together with our public health staff. Thanks to all of our public health staff for the tremendous work that you've been doing nonstop for the last year. We appreciate it and, again, are here to support your efforts and get to a better place in our community. So with that, I will conclude and adjourn the meeting of the City Council at 11:21.
Thank you all. Stay safe, everybody.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. And so I am also going to adjourn the Travis County Commissioners Court meetings to give our tech folks a moment to shift everything back to our normal meeting setup. So we're going to adjourn it for five minutes, so we'll come back at 11:27 a.m. With that.
Judge, just to clarify, should we be on standby? We should not exit the portal for the meeting, correct? We should just stay on it?
I think, I think that's correct. I think, I think that's correct.